City Council Committee of Finances will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Clara?
Here. Just want to mention Counsel Kilby has reached out to me earlier today saying he had a prior commitment and he would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. Pursued to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. First, it's citizen's input time, however, no one has signed up for citizen's input, so we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the Special Charter Review Committee Report. We'll hold discussion and refer to the full counsel with the recommendation. Do you want to come down, please, charter members? Mr. Rumsey, Alan, you can come down as well. Please just take your name and address for the record so the public will know who is speaking in front of us.
I'm Tracy Almeida, 1658 Highland Avenue.
Rena Brown, 747 Whitemo Street.
Alan Rumsey, Corporation Counsel, and I was also ex officio member of the Charter Review Commission here.
Do you want to just open up and give... Counselor C2, do you want to say something? No?
I'll just give, I'll give a little review.
Good idea. Please speak into the microphone, though, so we can hear you crystal clear.
How's that? Better?
It's a lot better.
Okay. So, all the, first of all, I want to say, on behalf of myself and the other charter, Special Charter Review Committee members, thank you so much. Some of us were appointed by the council, some by the mayor, and the school committee, and we really had a great time going over the charter. From the beginning, one of the themes that ran through every meeting is that, upon reading the old charter, in the event you don't have it, everything's online. IT created a little area on the website, and they have the, I call it the old charter, but it's really the current charter is available. But one of the first things that we had extensive discussions about was making, recommending that the charter be a little more user-friendly. The current charter is very wordy. In our opinion, it was kind of difficult for the average person to read and understand, so we wanted to make it user-friendly. We also wanted to embrace citizen participation and input. We felt that the current charter is real wordy, difficult for a lot of people to follow, and it was missing things like a table of contents and, you know, definitive definitions. And so, one of the first things that we really went about changing was the whole format of it. If you look at the old charter and look at the new one you have, it has the table of contents, it delineates, you know, all the sections, and the current charter does that. But I, we felt that the recommendation was to really make it much more user-friendly. We did save the city $40,000. I know that that was one of the points of contention with one of our members, that the last time the charter was revised, it cost the city a substantial amount of money for the assistance of an outside entity to review it and make recommendations. So, I'd like to start out by saying we saved, we saved the city $40,000. We had no budget, we didn't need it. The city was very generous in printing up anything we needed. But going through the new charter, and just to point out, just a couple of the big changes we made, as I, I'm assuming all of you are aware, the current charter underwent a couple challenges in court. And one of them was the, I'll call it the Hetzler Decision. And just a little background, the new charter went into effect at a special election on November 7th. And at that time, on the same ballot, November of 2017, in November of 2017, on that same ballot was the approval for the new charter, the current one. And the, the citizen Hetzler was firefighter, who was also a school committee member, and he ran for reelection and won. And Corporation Counsel issued an opinion and told Mr. Hetzler that he could finish out his term, but he wouldn't be able to be reelected. And he challenged that, and the court took action on it immediately. Normally constitutional appeals take years to render a decision, but the court found that that particular charter provision violated his First Amendment right. And they went on to say that although the public interest and the voters had voted to approve that charter, that particular section in the charter that prohibited him from running again was unconstitutional. So that was one of the areas that we changed. That particular section comes up a few times in our current charter. It's under the prohibition sections, and so we took the, all the prohibition sections, we only made one, and it does not, our language is, no one, even a city employee, is not prohibited from running from any elected position. And, because the First Amendment encompasses, you know, speech, religion, assembly, and the case law over the years always interprets a lot of those, and one of them is your right to run for office. And so, the Hetzler decision said, yeah, that particular portion of the Fall River Charter is unconstitutional. Even though the voters approved that charter, the court felt that the public interest did not outweigh his constitutional right under the First Amendment to run for that office. So we did change that. The other section in the charter that was challenged in court was the Ten Taxpayers versus Jayseel Carrer. And what happened is the taxpayers petitioned the court to, Mr. Carrer was recalled. And our current charter reads that any elected official can be recalled if the procedure is followed, and he was recalled. And the current charter says, you're going to have a recall election, and then you're going to have your, what's the word? Special election for, you know, somebody to be voted into that recalled position. And what happened is that despite the fact that Mr. Carrer was recalled in the top portion of that ballot, as everybody knows, he won the majority vote and was reelected. We, the chart, the Special Charter Commission, first of all, we had a lot of public input on that. And I have to tell you, one of the things are, just because somebody's convicted of a felony doesn't mean they can't run for office. And that's from President of the United States to school committee, city council, or mayor of Fall River. So we knew that we can't prohibit anybody from running. But what we did was, our recommendation is that there be two elections. We worked with Ryan Lyons from the Elections Commission, and certainly we didn't want to do anything that couldn't practically be done, right? So there, it's almost the same procedure, requiring the same amount of signatures and petitions, and it has to follow through the same way it's done. So if an elected official is the subject of a recall, that that is an election all of its own. The recall election will take place. And if that individual is recalled, within 45 or 60 days, there will be a special election. I'm paraphrasing, there are, there are time and date parameters to that. If the person is recalled within the first 180 days, if you go through this, this new recommended charter, you'll see the time changes in there. If it's within, like, near the end of the term. And then what we did was, if the person is recalled, we refer you to the vacancy in an office section. For instance, if the mayor is recalled, then the president of the council will fill in as mayor until such time as either a special election takes place or the rest of the term, depending on the time factor, the rest of the term is completed. And, and, and we recommend it that way. One, a lot of public input. Two, what that lawsuit said was, well, your charter doesn't speak to it. Sorry he was recalled and he was reelected, but the current charter you have is silent on that, and the court was not going to interfere with the democratic process. And one of the things we felt as a committee, and there was a lot of discussion, is, yes, it's costly for two special elections, but the, but really how almost every member felt was, you really can't put a price on democracy. If the voters are speaking, you know, in a recall election, then we'll have a separate election for that office. And we, we made some changes to the vacancy. One of the other issues that came up during Mr. Carrer's tenure as mayor was trying to get him to, you know, trying to get him out of office without a recall. And so, some of the things we put in there is that we have a timeframe. God forbid somebody gets ill and can't perform their duties of their elected position. If they are unable to be present and, and do their job, we put a 21-day kind of cap on that. If you're unavailable, unable to perform your duties for 21 days, that office is deemed vacant, and, and the vacancy provision of the recommended charter changes really delineate that. Other than that, those were the big ones. We changed...
Excuse me for, just one second.
Go ahead.
So, let's say he gets better on the 25th day, does he reassume the position or does he lose it completely because the 21 days have lapsed?
Well, go to that. I can't remember the exact language. Was it three something? So, Section 3-10, page 19. That's vacancy. Temporary absence of the mayor. This is on page 17. Section 3-8, temporary absence of the mayor. Whenever by reason of sickness or other cause the mayor is unable to perform the duties of the office for more than 21 consecutive days, the president of the city council shall be the acting mayor unless the president of the city council is unable to serve. And then we refer you back to 3-8. And in the event the mayor announces his inability before the expiration of 21 days, the provisions shall apply. So if he resigns. And then 3-8 goes, 3-8C goes on. In the event the city council president is unable to serve as acting mayor, the vice president of the city council shall serve. If the city council president or vice president is unable, the city council shall elect from among its memberships a counselor to serve as acting mayor, and then a special election will occur. But the special elections depend on where in that term this vacancy occurred. If it's close to the end of the term, the acting mayor will, will finish the term because there's a general election coming up. If it's after, I think, the 180 days, then a special election will be scheduled.
So, that doesn't answer the question, though. So, on the 25th day, if the mayor feels better, does he come back?
Well, on the 21st day, if it's 21 consecutive days...
Correct. I get it. So if, if I have surgery, or some, the mayor has surgery, anyone has surgery, and he's out for 26 days, but he comes back on the 27th day, does he lose everything because the president is already going to be the council president acting as mayor?
Correct.
So he's gone.
He's out.
So if you're absent for three weeks as the mayor due to any circumstance...
Illness, or whatever. Right. Right.
That's a short period of time.
But, again, these are just recommendations.
Okay, no, no, I hear you.
We still, we still have a couple of meetings scheduled.
Okay.
One, there's typos in here after reviewing it. We have typos we have to fix. But those were some of the big areas, and plus we wanted to come to the council and get some input.
Yeah, no, appreciate it. Just wanted to get that clarified.
So we'll, and we'll take note of that, so...
Counselor C2?
Yeah, my only comment on that would be, so if somebody has a heart attack, needs triple bypass surgery, they are not coming back in 21 days. And I don't think somebody should be penalized and lose their position because they had a heart attack and needed bypass surgery.
Right.
So, that's where my sticking point would be.
Yeah, but that's what she said.
And then there's other illnesses as well that would, that would preclude somebody from, you know. So, I, I suppose, I don't know if, again, you know, you start getting into murky water because now you have exceptions, and how many exceptions, and how, and what exceptions? So it gets murky again. I just don't think somebody should be penalized for something like that.
21 days, that's a brief. Please continue.
But, like I said, we're still meeting. This is just to kind of bring you up to speed. This is our very first kind of official draft, so, and that's a good point. It was not, it really wasn't anything that came up, so I, we'll certainly bring it up at the next meeting. A couple of the other things were, like, on the election ballot, right now it's by lottery, we voted to recommend that it mimic state and federal alphabetical order. We lowered the amount of signatures. Our recommendation was to lower the signatures to 100 across the board to, you know, get on the ballot to be a candidate. We lowered the percentage of voters for initiatives and referendums. It was 12% of the registered voters from the last election, which is thousands. So we lowered that to 5%, which is still in the thousands, but it's within 120, 120 days. We didn't change the timeframe, we changed the number. And again, part of it was, the theme that was running through a lot of the committee meetings and a lot of the public input was that people wanted to be able to have a voice, be heard, and be involved. And there was a lot of discussion about lowering those numbers so more people could be involved. I took some notes. Those were kind of the big ones that I can think of. Do you have any questions? If I think of any other big ones, I'll, I'll blurt them out.
Thank you. You, I think you did a wonderful job.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? Counselor C5?
I don't have a question, but a comment. If somebody wanted to run for office, before it was only 50 signatures, certified signatures that you'd need. Really, I thought 50 was fine. It gives somebody new the opportunity to get 50 signatures. You know, to have it for 100 or 150 that it was as of late. It really, somebody new coming on board maybe doesn't have that, you know, ability to get that many signatures, and I think everybody should have the opportunity to run. I would lower that back to 50 where it was.
There was a motion made for it to go back to 50. That motion did not pass, but when it went to 100, it passed. There definitely was a lot of discussion about that as well.
Well, 50 or 100 isn't really a big deal, but 50, I just think, new people coming on board. It's difficult, and you've just got to give them the opportunity to, you know, get those signatures.
And that was a lot of the public input on that, too, was that, you know, can we, you know, can we go back to 50, but after a vote, it, we compromise to 100?
We don't even have primaries sometimes because you don't have enough people that are running.
Because you don't have enough, I know.
And that would be my thing. I mean, I remember the days when there were 50, 60 people running for city council versus, you know, not even having a primary.
Right.
Which is a good thing for us, but it's not fair to the public. My two cents, so bring that back to me.
And let me just, I, I want to say this because I just came across it. One of the big questions were if somebody, if a city employee runs for office, do they collect both pays? The rules of ethics govern that, and everybody takes that ethics course, right, every year. And we refer to mass general law on that. That, I, I believe the language is, they can elect which pay they want. Normally, most people will take the, the better pay, but they can't be compensated twice. And so, and that wasn't anything that we could put in the charter. Again, because the, the laws that govern ethics of, you know, municipal employees and appointees, we did not address compensation in here because it wasn't really in our wheelhouse to do that.
Counselor D2?
I do.
Counselor C2, Counselor D, any other questions?
Yeah, my first question is, when's your next meeting?
We haven't scheduled yet.
Okay.
No, but it's coming up because we wanted to do this, get some feedback, and then when the rooms are, I can tell you this, when the rooms are available. But it'll be sooner than later. I mean, we, the report tells you, you know, we met on Monday nights, and in the beginning, there was a lot of public input, and as the, as the time went on, there was a little less public input. But we met regularly, and those meetings went from an hour to two hours every time. And I want to commend, we had two clerks because there was a lot of, you know, writing and stuff. Paul Machado and, and Tim Campos were our clerks, and they did a phenomenal job of kind of keep track of it, you know. Nine people, everybody kind of talking at the same time was a little tough, but they, all our minutes are online, all of our agendas are online, every draft we've ever had, we made available online. So it, it'll be within the next couple of months.
No, the only reason I ask is, I think from my standpoint, this is more the time that I would want to have input than before, to wait to see what the recommendations were, why the recommendations were made. I have read some of it, I've looked at some of it online. So, again, just more from that point of view. Now that, now that you've made these decisions, now where do we go from here and how do people feel about the decisions that were made, I suppose. I personally, I don't have issue with the 100 signatures, it's reduced by 50. I don't think 100 is that difficult to get. And it, on one hand, it gives a new person the opportunity to meet new people because it's forcing them out there to, to interact with people to get that signature. And one of the hardest things is somebody getting to know who's running. And that's it, that's all I have.
I mean, one of the other things we changed is the, the current charter will, would say things like, any registered voter is eligible to run for office. We were like, so an eligible voter from Somerset can run for Fall River office? So we changed language like, any registered voter that is a resident of the city of Fall River. Because, you know, you can litigate anything. There's never going to be a charter that someone is not going to challenge. There were four attorneys, you know, three attorneys including, four really, including Alan, and, you know, nothing is foolproof litigation-wise. There's a, there's a lawyer or a law firm out there that if the person comes in, can challenge anything. So, you know, we did want to make, though, those areas of the current charter that cost the city money were the things we really took as a priority.
Well, I think part of the original one, too, was, very often, there was not specificity.
Right.
Things would be vague. There would be a black, a white, and a gray area, and there was no definitive language that three people could look at and agree that the point was the point. Everybody had an interpretation, and interpretation leads to court.
Right. And, and that was one, that was a lot of discussion during the committee meetings, is that when we read the old charter, I mean, if you, if you go line by line, the old charter would have a sentence of 15 words, just having, trying to explain something simple, we got it down to like five or six words and made it plain as day. And trust me, you know, we had nine committee members, everybody would come up with the scenario, like you said, of interpreting something in the charter, and, and trust me, we had nine takes on that. So, that was one of the things that was important to us, was to make this user-friendly, that when you pick it up and read it, it's plain language, and anybody picking it up could figure out what it was trying to say. But I won't, listen, there were areas we had to read two or three times because we were all looking at it going, kind of, what does this mean? We weren't kind of sure, you know? So, I, I think the committee did a, a, a great job. We had a, we had Tracy, and, and she's in education, and we had Kathy Nemkovich, and she's a member of a, you know, does a lot in the community. We had three lawyers, we had a city counselor, we had a school committee member. I mean, we, we had a lot of people from different areas.
Yeah, there's no doubt, it was a great community, guys did an excellent job.
Yeah, it was good.
There's no doubt. Do you heal, Counselor?
Yes, I do.
Counselor C6, Counselor Ponti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a couple of things up for just clarity. Before I get into that, Attorney Rumsey, so, the process now is going to be, the Charter Commission is going to, I'm assuming, have a final report edited and in complete version. It comes to the city council, the city council needs to adopt it, and then it runs up to the state, correct?
No.
Well, honestly, the rules aren't real specific. The city council can do with it what they want, honestly. So the way the charter's written, there's going to be 10-year reviews every 10 years. The procedure's almost the same as the five-year, but they're, they're slightly different. The composition of the 10-year review will be slightly different. I think the city council will have five appointees for the next one, so you'll have more appointees for the next committee. In 10 years from now? Every 10 years, which now is at, actually, ends in a seven, so we're pretty close on that. The way this is written, and you have to kind of read between the lines a little bit in here, this is a one-time deal. This is the fifth year after a new charter. So it's almost as if this fifth year was designed to, to find out errors, that errors of omission, that, oh my gosh, we need to fix this. We didn't realize that the charter had these problems. So, the, the five-year review, which is what we have here, it's a one-time deal. Every other time, it's going to be 10 years, ending in seven, okay? So what they do is, they could have met in private and submitted a report and had two public meetings, and then the city council could act on it, or just put it on file for the 10-year review to look at, almost like, you know, here's some background work that's already been done for you. Or can, I mean, what, what it also could do is submit it to the mayor for approval, and then it would go to our legislature for a special act. But history usually dictates that the state legislature will not re, approve a special act unless it's also approved by the voters, by the voters. So, this council has to decide what they want to do with it. Now, I can tell you, the five-year review could have been very basic. This group did a phenomenal job. I mean, they met, every meeting, I believe, was in public. Nothing was behind closed doors. And they met over 20 times. So they didn't just put this together in five minutes. So, I mean, I think what's probably the, my recommendation is to, it should be posted on the website, provide for a little additional time for both the city council and the public to review it online, and make additional recommendations, and then this council can decide, hey, we should make this change right away, we don't need to wait for the 10-year, or they can just put it on file and then have the report ready for the 10-year. Okay, so at what point in this discussion should you decide, as an example, discuss term limits, if that is the will of, of the committee? Is that the appropriate time to do it in the year ending in seven, or if we want to do that now? I'm not saying that, I'm just using this as an example.
They, they discussed, we discussed, everything was discussed.
Everything's on the table, both, I mean, as I said, five-year or 10-year, everything's on the table. But if they wanted to make a change, let's just say you wanted to change the form of government, for example.
Right.
Could, you could do that within the Charter Commission, and then it comes to the city council, do we have to adopt that? As a full report? I think the city council can, can make changes to the recommendation as this city council sees fit, and then send it up to the mayor for, you know, approval. And then, this, they can be decided whether or not it wants to be put on file, or what, whether it wants to be sent to the legislature as a special act.
It, it goes to the attorney general's office, though.
First.
Let's just say, the mayor says okay, and the council says okay. It goes to the municipal law department at the attorney general's office first, before anybody sees it. And they only check it for conflict with state law. They check it, and they send it back, it doesn't conflict with state laws. They neither make recommendations nor to even, they'll tell you if there's something wrong with it, they'll say, okay, this conflicts with Mass General Law 223, Section 5. And they'll send it back. It's after they say no conflict, if, in fact, you've approved it. Let's say you make recommendations, you want us to reconsider our recommendation on the vacancy in the mayor, right? And we go back and meet. Or you say, we'd like you to discuss term limits, right? Whatever document it is that's finally submitted and approved is the one that will go up. And only after it passes muster at the attorney general's office could it be submitted for a special act. I can tell you, if term limits is part of the real question, there was a meeting and a half on term limits.
And what was the result of that?
It stayed the same. And, like I said, the minutes are online. It stayed the same. And, uh, like I said, the minutes are online, all the meetings were televised, so I'm assuming that they're all available to view, and a motion, I think motion was made in, or maybe a mo- maybe it didn't even make it to motion.
I don't believe it did.
It might have not even made it to motion, to increase term limits. The other thing we discussed a lot.
Increase ter- the term of office.
Term of office.
And, and that wasn't discussed. So, so if you take the mayor's office, for example, there was no discussion about making it a four-year term for mayor with only two terms?
There was discussion, there was just no motion made.
How come?
Because the majority of the members, I think there was only two. I wanted to increase it, and there was only, I only had one person that said, yeah, that's a great idea. I can tell you that, because it's, it's all public, it's for public record. I wanted to increase the time, counselors, mayor, um, I wanted to increase the time you're in office. I was a very minority. There was only one other that was supportive. I think, I think it was you.
I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily.
And so, uh, you know, we, we discussed it, and I don't even think it made it to motion, because we could tell by the discussions that, uh, most were opposed to it. We also discussed limits on terms. Let's say you're a city councilor for twenty elections, right? That didn't make it to motion. The other thing we discussed was ward versus at-large, right? Because we, we would always discuss what we got a lot of public input on. I mean, don't get me wrong, we went through every section, discussed it all. One of the other public inputs we had was, can we go back to ward, which is how it was very early on? Uh, that never made it to motion either. I, right.
So, I, I wanted to, I, I'll, I'll read the minutes, I guess, of the term limits and terms of office.
And I can, if you want, I can send you the dates of it, so you don't have to go through all of them, but.
Yeah, I would urge you to restart that conversation if you have an interest in having mayoral term limits or the length of office, if you want to restart that conversation and see if there's a new appetite a year later. Um, it's just something for discussion, because it's often discussed. I'm not saying it's going to get approval by anybody, but I just think, I'd like to read that, and I'd like to see that. Um, the other thing I would like to re- uh, go into is, uh, in terms of the city council president's role, I noticed that you made the change term to term. When you say term to term, I know there's always been an issue, and when I served up there, I recognized that, you know, the city council president would have to come down at the start of the new year, because that president is sworn in year to year, not term to term. So it's, it was the will of the committee to go for two years for city council president. Now, should the council, let's say, not saying this is the case, but let's just say down the road wants to say, well, we want to make a change in leadership. The city council's ability to make a change in leadership down the road, where is that here? And so should the council want to go through a change like they did last term, uh, uh, council president in the middle of the term? What would stop the city council from doing that under this new charter?
Let me check. Give me a couple of minutes. Appointments to the city council, so it's in section two, under legislation. I know there was discussion about term to term, because the current charter was vague. Uh, and it, it was precisely that problem. There was like an overlap, correct? Like, somebody would.
No, all, all it was, was we would start the new year, and it would, we would be, we'd be without a city council president for like five days.
Well, you have to choose a city council president every year, not every term.
Right.
Right.
But there was a lag with the dates.
That's what it was, because there was none.
There would be no city council president for five or six days until the city council has their meeting and elects a council president. So if we don't have, the council president's term ends the, just January first, if we don't have a meeting until January twenty-third, there's no council president from January first to January twenty-third. So, my, my question is, do we revote? Or we, or is there, is the body's suggestion to do term to term? And if the council wants to change its leadership down the road, what do we do?
It's in two-two. We did discuss that, that's why we made the change.
It's in, I mean, I, I think what you're referring to, uh, Ms. Brown, is two-point-two.
Two-two, right.
Counselor Panti, I think that, I mean, my answer to your question is, I mean, if it's in the charter, um, your ordinance can't change that. But if it's not in the charter, you know, the city council makes their own rules for their own meetings, you can, you can change that on a, you know.
No, all right, so let me ask a different question.
Very, very clear. Want me to explain real clear, clear, Counselor? Right now, this, the word is, the council will serve as council president till the end of the year. If you change the language and say the council will serve as council president until a new council president is voted at the next, at the first meeting of the next year, that'll fix the problem. You'll have a council president up until the new one is elected, and that happens at the first city council meeting of every new year. You put that language in it. What's that?
That's the lang- that's how we made the language.
So, just so we're clear, I don't want to.
And, Counselor, the court just told me it was end of year, not term.
No, the, the summary says term to term, but in the charter document itself, it says that the president will serve until the next, um, election of president.
All right, so I, I'm sorry, I was reading the summary.
So we're good.
And it does say that, you're correct. I was reading the summary. It says, the president shall serve until the first meeting of the next calendar year, which is fine. Okay.
Yes, but the charter is clear.
Good job, ladies.
The rec- yeah, did come up a lot. And that's why we changed the language, because of that gap.
Yep, good job.
All right, thank you. Um, la- uh, another question I have, it's terms of preliminary elections. For, for the last couple of years, we've been, you know, I know there's been some discussion, I'm curious if the Charter Commission talked about this, um, when there would be only one race, mayor, city council, school committee, there'd only be one preliminary election or primary. For example, school committee only, and there one, wasn't one for mayor or city council, right, or whatever. Had, was there any discussion, I don't even know if it's legal to forego a preliminary if you don't have at least more than one of, uh, um, challenge for office to go from preliminary to your final election in November?
I think we asked the elections office about that, and I think, um, the law, the voter, the mass general laws dictate that there has to be a preliminary, regardless of how many for the office. I know that when it came to the elections, I can tell you, kudos to Ryan Lyons, he came down three times and answered all our questions. Um, and I believe it came up in discussion, and it was that we could not.
Can we find out?
Eliminate a preliminary.
Dude, I don't need like a long-written opinion. Can we find out about that? Because I think it's, like, for example, I remember there one year, a couple of years ago, there was no challenge for maybe mayor or city council, and then there was one for school committee only, so we spent, what, sixty thousand dollars on an election for, um, just school committee, for example, right? So, to me, that is concerning. So, under what Massachusetts law is it out there that we are to, um, not have a preliminary election?
That we have to have a preliminary, right. I'll find that.
Do you know, Attorney Ramsey?
I, I think Attorney Brown's correct on this, but I can't say with one-hundred percent certainty.
I, I can check to see. I know that I pulled the Mass. General Laws. I, I, I'll get the Mass. Gen- I'll get the statute for you.
All right, good, because it doesn't make any s- it doesn't make sense.
But like I said, um, we were pretty grateful. Ryan Lyons came down three times and explained everything about election processes, timeframes, costs, procedure. Um, he's a wealth of information, and we'll find out.
Okay.
And, and I absolutely will get that info.
All right, one thing I would like to also speak about is this. Um, I remember vividly, uh, when we went through the whole Jaisel saga, and trust me, it was a saga, right? Um, we had to deal with all that nonsense. And I remember there was this tit-for-tat between me, when I was serving as acting mayor, and the chairman of the, or the vice chairman of the school committee did not want the acting mayor to serve in the capacity of acting mayor to chair over a school committee meeting. Didn't feel it was necessary, didn't feel it was appropriate, so I just said, I, I'm not fighting with you, I have no interest in doing that, just run your meeting. So my question is, in the case that the mayor would step aside, and the city council president is acting mayor, and essentially did have all powers of the mayor, would that city council president slash acting mayor serve in the capacity as chairman of the school committee? Did you discuss that?
Well, we kept the language. We didn't change any of the language regarding what the acting mayor can do. So, if the school committee said you couldn't, they were violating the charter.
Right.
But we kept the language. The acting mayor shall exercise all the rights and powers of the mayor shall be sworn to the faithful discharge of the mayoral duties. Any city councilor serving as acting mayor under this section shall not have the words candidate for reelection printed if you're, uh, running again. And, but we also put in there that the acting counselor who's the mayor gets the mayor's pay. Because that was another issue. People were discussing about, well, if the pre- council president is serving as the mayor, does he get the mayor's pay? Yeah, whoever's acting as the mayor, under our recommendation, is that that acting mayor gets mayor pay.
So what happens to this?
And gets to do everything the mayor does.
What happens to the seat of the counselor who takes the mayor's job? Is that become?
And if that's va- so, and we, we answered that into vacancy. If any elected position is vacant, it's the next vote getter that sits into that, is sits in that spot.
Okay, so, in a situation like happened with Jaisel, where he just said, decided, you know, I'm, I'm going to still keep my pay, I'm still going to be mayor, finish out the term, the council president jumps in, he wouldn't have been able to keep his pay, because he would have had to resign from office, council president would get the mayor job, and then you would have filled that vacant city council seat.
With the next one.
With the next one in, okay. All right, last question I have, recall. I know there was some discussion about recalling elected officials in this, uh, in this, and I see, I see the first comment about ten taxpayer lawsuit as the first thing.
Yes.
Um, can you elaborate a little bit? I, I mean, is it, essentially in summary, is it easier, going to be easier to recall an elected official?
We kept the same numbers, you want to answer that one?
I don't think it's easier.
We lowered the numbers of votes necessary by five percent.
What happens after the recall is what we dealt with.
Right, so I, I'm more interested in hearing about, if, if somebody wants to recall a politician, a school committee member, city council, or mayor, they go to a ten taxpayer lawsuit, it goes before the city clerk, the city council decides, and then we have a recall? What? Am I reading that right?
I'm getting there. Let me get there. What number was the recall? It was eight. Uh, eight-dash-five is the recall. Eight-dash-five. Any holder? No recall, uh, within three months after they take their office.
Is that new?
Hang on, any ten tax, any ten voters of the city may file with the city clerk the affidavit of who they want to recall. And then, hang on, uh, copy of the petition. So then the recall, after the city clerk certifies the ten taxpayers, those ten taxpayers have to go out, and within twenty days, have to get five percent of the general elec- the last general election voter's signatures.
We're prior, it was ten percent, correct?
Right.
Wha- wha- what went into that discussion?
Let me see what the old one was.
I mean, I'm just, I, I believe it was ten, to the council president's point.
So the last one, the, the current charter that we're operating under also has five percent. So it was five percent for the last recall fiasco.
So, five percent of the total amount, so if eleven thousand people voted, you would need five percent of eleven thousand people, those same eleven thousand people? Or five percent of eleven?
No, registered voters.
Registered voters.
Registered voters.
That came out.
All right.
That came out. So if eleven thousand came out, they, we, you know, they would get the numbers from the election commission, uh, how many, you know, registered voters came out, it would be five percent of that. And that's the current charter too. That's how the last recall was. We didn't change the procedure in the recall, we just separated the elections.
Okay. Makes sense. You get what she said, Counselor?
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, we did, we didn't change the procedure at all, we just separated them, because the ten taxpayers beef was, this guy just got reelected and he was recalled. And the court said, so sorry, your charter says that's how it goes, it's silent on it. So when, it's not silent anymore, we're going to have two elections. So in that recall election, if the person is not recalled, they keep the office, and they keep it during that process.
Got it. Okay, I yield, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor T. One, Counselor Dean?
So, I guess, just to clarify that. It says five percent of the voters, not the voters that came out, right, so.
Right, registered voters.
Registered voters.
Registered voters.
At, at the time of the, okay, because that, that's a big difference, so it's going to be five percent of forty-five thousand, right.
And we might have to clean that up. I mean, you're, you're right, we, most of the places that asked for a percentage of the voters, we were specific. Like in a, a citizen initiative, it's, uh.
I mean, that lan- that language is similar to if you were going to, you're going to do a Charter Commission, right? So you got to get five percent of the voters and all that, so.
So, I, we'll, we, I think we should clean that up, though, I'm not taking that.
So then the only, the only, I guess, question statement that I would have is in regards to the, uh, term limits or, um, extensions of terms. I don't know that I would, I'd support four years for city council terms. Uh, I don't know that I want to serve for, for four years, but, uh, has, has, during, during that conversation and discussion, I, I do, I personally do feel that the, the mass term should be four years. There's, there's no way that you get, can get an executive, well, let me take a step back. I, I think we should change our form of government, and I don't think we should have a mayor, I think we should have a town manager. That's just, just my opinion. Um, I, I think it professionalizes what we need, it takes the politics out of, of our realm of being political. Um, so, that being said, if, if that doesn't change, and we have, uh, an elected mayor who's going to run and be the executive of a, of the city, I do feel that four years is the best way to do it. When you start talking about strategic planning, things of that nature, I think you need at least a minimum of four years. You can't put together a plan and then have to worry about an election, and I think that partly contributes to the political aspects of what we see, uh, ver- very often. So I, I guess I would, I would ask that we have those conversations and the discussions. The other piece I would, I would ask, at least from the city council standpoint, and potentially the school committee, is, is, has any discussion or thought been given to mimic, uh, what towns do, so, um, we don't have, because we have all nine city councils that go up at once, and, and we all run at the same time. Um, so what towns do is they break it up, so you'll have three run one year, three run the next year, and if you have a five-member board, one person would run by themselves, um, in that, so every year, there's an election, but you don't lose the historical knowledge. Um, so, I think that might be something that might be, um, something we should consider, because with a nine-member council, you could have three councils up every single year, but they could potentially serve three terms, uh, three years for a term as opposed to a two-year.
Right.
Uh, so you kind of extend it a little bit, or even if it's four years, but you, you get it into a situation where every year, there's somebody up, so that there are, there are, there's an opportunity for people that want to run for, for office, they have the, they have that opportunity every single year, so.
And, and we had a former mayor on the commission too, and, um, and, uh, you know, and he brought to the table, you can't get much done in two years, you know, the, you, you get elected, and you're, it takes you that long to really put a good team together, right? And the next thing you know, you're kind of concentrating on reelection again halfway through that. So, you know, um, and it's, was four years ago, I mean, trust me, you know, I brought information to kind of back up my argument that we really need to think about this, because, you know, that mayor position is, is one that really takes time to get stuff done, right? And, you know, and we had a former mayor to give his input on that. We grabbed charters from other surrounding towns too, you know, to kind of, uh, show us where to go with stuff, and I'm a big fan of it too. I, I, I would, you know, uh, trust me, I tried. I'll bring it back to the table too, because, you know, um, if, if the majority of counselors are, you know, want us to take a look at term limits, I'd be more than happy to.
City manager is the way to go. Just saying, I'm just saying, I mean, there, there are, there are municipalities in the state of Massachusetts, and you look at, yep, how, how successful they are, um, there's a, there's a common denominator in terms of that, and I think that's a, a professional manager to run the day-to-day operation of, of the city and remove the politics.
There was a lot of talk about it. There was a lot of talk about going back to wards, let's go back to get people from different parts of the city. Trust me, there was a lot of talk about it. I do want to point one thing out that we did in here. One of the other public inputs were, so you violate the charter, no big whoop. And so we did put some language in there, uh, kind of, um, explaining a process for a charter violation, like when, when, um, Counselor Panti was mayor, and the school's telling him he can't preside over the school committee, I mean, that's a blatant violation of the charter.
He was, he was just afraid to fight.
Maybe it was just him, I don't know, but anyway.
He was fighting for four years.
Um, we put together a three-panel grievance committee, and so what happens is, you know, the mayor is entrusted, and the city councils are entrusted with enforcing the charter and making sure it's followed. If a charter violation, if somebody becomes aware of it, they send a written notification to the mayor, the mayor then, um, kind of puts together a letter, lets that person know, by the way, you're violating the charter, knock it off right now. And if that keeps continuing, then this three, it's a, the city council picks somebody, the mayor picks somebody, and the school committee picks somebody. And then that charter grievance committee gets together, public hearing, reviews the charter violation, makes a recommendation. One of the things that, uh, we could not do in the charter is penalize people for it. I was a big fan of penalizing people. Well, because if, if you fine them, they might not do it again. Well, cuz if, i- if you fine them, they might not do it again, right? But we can't, we can't do that. So we did start, because that was a lot of public input, like, you know, where's the teeth in this charter? Well, if you violate the Constitution of the United States, there's a process for you to challenge those violations. It's go- it's filing a lawsuit. And, and the charter does refer that you can do summary process, which is a fancy name for a lawsuit. If you think somebody's violating the charter, you can do that. So that was another big thing we kinda recommended.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say a couple of things on what I've heard so far. Four years for a mayor term, to me, I wouldn't change it at all. Can you imagine four years as a career administration that we just had? You, we talk about we want new people to run for office, we want new people to get involved. If a mayor has the ability to hire people for the next four years, cuz he just got elected, and put his staff in place and people in place, do you know how it's gonna get that person out? It's like trying to get a congressman out with those four-year terms and six-year terms and senators and congressmen. They're there for thirty-five, forty years. Now, if we have an election every two year, two years, and the mayor's doing a good job, he's gonna get reelected. But if the mayor's not doing a good job, you got two years to get out of him. There was a four-year term for mayor years ago, well before I was around, and everyone will tell you it was the most corrupt administration they had seen, that's why they got rid of it, within the first four years, they went back to two-year terms. There's nothing wrong, we talk about term limits, we have term limits now, we serve two-year term. You wanna run for reelection, you run, you don't wanna run for reelection, you gotta, you, you gotta run with everyone else. I wouldn't change it. Four years is an awful long time, and guess what? You get the wrong person there for four years, and he gets reelected, that's eight years of the wrong person being in that seat. That's an awful long time. So, I, I know I've served here for a long time, but it's two years at a time, and the public decides who's gonna serve here, two years at a time. It, it's a lot, uh, might be a bit more work, but it's well worth it to give the public that opportunity to put the wrong people out of office and put the pe- right people in office. As far as ward counselors, not a fan either, because you have people living across the street from each other, and everyone in the neighborhood's gotta fight for who they wanna support, and then you got two great candidates, but because they're in the same ward, only one of them can be chosen. Not a good idea, just choose the best people in the city that wanna run for office. That, that's all I have to say for now. That, what we spoke earlier about the time, twenty-one days of the mayor not being able to serve, I would like to see a minimum of forty-five days at a minimum, um, something that I would support. But the council will, it says we can send it with a recommendation, I would hold off on making any recommendation, maybe just table this until they do more of their due diligence and come back with changes, and then present to the council back then. But I just wanted to make those points out, because I'll tell ya, I don't think that anyone in the city would like to see a four-year career term.
Motion to table.
City of manager. Second.
Thank you, listen, just let me tell you one thing though, honestly, everyone in that charter review committee, you guys did a phenomenal job, outstanding job. Uh, a lot of hard work went into it, I wanna commend all of you for what you did and your time you put into it, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, we didn't get a chance to say happy birthday to Counselor Sampson, happy birthday, man.
That's not true, I, I wish her a happy birthday.
Motion to table has been made, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it. Item number three, convey the city administrator and the administration community utilities to discuss overdue water service payments owed to the city of Fall River from the town of Westport. Adopted on nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Please state your name and address for the record, so we'll have it, and just, Mr. Furlong, if you could just bring us up to speed on where we are with that, please.
Seth Aiken, city administrator.
Paul Furlong, the administrator of community utilities. So, uh, the council was provided a letter with a summary of, uh, the past due account from, uh, the town of Westport. This dates back to, uh, in beginning in twenty sixteen, uh, when the, uh, accuracy of the water meter at the town line was put in question by the town of Westport. The town of Westport, uh, has the ability, within the agreement, to uh, bleed off water as the city does for water quality purposes. They do do that at needed locations throughout their whole entire system. Back at that time, some of the meters, the accuracy of those meters were in question, as well as the record-keeping, uh, by the town of the amount of water that was bled from those meters. So, there was, uh, some questions back in twenty sixteen. Coming up, uh, in twenty sixteen, there was a three-month period where the town line meter was out of service. The, uh, city of Fall River and Westport agreed for a three-month period for payments of eight thousand dollars per month, uh, for those three months, and those three months only. Once that period was over, the town of Westport continued to pay, uh, the eight thousand dollars per month for a period of time. Uh, this went up until about twenty twenty, uh, different various payments, uh, were made by the town. And, uh, when a new town administrator came in, in the town of Westport, uh, they were, uh, they wanted to come up to speed with, uh, the, the account. Make sure that all the meters that they were bleeding water from were reading properly. We know that the town meter was reading proper, properly at that time, we had, uh, accuracy checks done back in twenty sixteen. Uh, so from then on, we set up a new account, starting in the beginning of twenty-one, calendar year twenty-one. Since then, uh, they have provided us all of the appropriate data for the, uh, bleeding of water uh, within the town that we've been able to credit to their account. Uh, and their account since, uh, January of twenty-one has been, uh, fully up to date. If there are any discrepancies between the town and, uh, what the water department has, uh, we make sure that the discrepancies are taken care of, uh, right, uh, immediately, and that, uh, the correct payments are made and applied to the acco- the account. So that current account is, uh, fully up to date since twenty-one, uh, and has not had any past or overdue bills. So really what we're talking about is a period uh, back in twenty sixteen up until, uh, twenty twenty, the end of twenty twenty-one. So there was, uh, we had an account within Munis, and the way that Munis works, the account goes in, uh, the charges go in. What is put in, um, by our staff, if we didn't have the available credit data or anything like that, that couldn't be applied to the bills at the time. Uh, so that account was, uh, was put in there. Munis automatically adds interest to all of the accounts that are, that are within there. Uh, the problem with Westport and the intermunicipal agreement with Westport, uh, interest is not, uh, talked about within the intermunicipal agreement, uh, with the town of Westport, so, uh, it, it's silent to that. As, as well as penalties, uh, and everything else. So we've gone through, uh, we did a full evaluation of the account dating all the way back to twenty sixteen. Uh, charges, payments, uh, everything, uh, we provided that to Westport. Westport went through that, and we had discussions, uh, over the past couple of years, uh, about, uh, where to, where we felt what was due to the city, uh, and what, what's part felt, uh, they, uh, were due to the city. We kinda came to a, uh, a standstill at one point, uh, that's when, uh, the town, uh, and mayor, mayor's representative uh, was brought, uh, brought in, and, uh, re- most recently, we've come up with an agreement of the amount due to the city of Fall River. Uh, the amount due is, uh, compar- comparable to what their current usage is of, minus the amount that they paid over those past years, uh, if we were to take and project that out, based on what their current usage is, uh, measured at the town line. So that's what the, uh, settlement that was, uh, proposed, uh, by us to Westport, Westport tentatively accepted at this point. Uh, the settlement, uh, amount has been in front of the water board, and the water board has approved that amount.
Councilor T. One, Councilor Dean.
Mr. Furlong, I guess the biggest question I have is, it seems like there's been a back and forth between Westport and Fall River for quite some time.
Yes.
But nowhere in the minu- intermunicipal agreement is there any language about who, who's the third party that deals with the issue? So, Fall River says one thing, Westport says another, who's the independent third party that deems who's right, who's wrong?
Well, again, so if it were to get that, to that point where there would be an impasse, um, again, I would seek legal counsel on, on where to go if, if we felt we got to that point, and Seth may be able to sorry to lay that on you, but-
No, not at all. So, I think it's important to note that from nineteen eighty-six, when Westport first started purchasing water, through two thousand thirteen, the intermunicipal agreements were, were regularly updated. In two thousand thirteen, uh, there was a new municipal agreement put into place, which was not updated once the dispute started in sixteen. So it should've been updated, probably it wasn't. And because the dispute has been ongoing, we haven't changed the agreement, we haven't updated it. However, um, this settlement, um, is subject only to Westport's agreement, that they would execute a new municipal agreement with us, where we would fill in the holes, because there are holes. Uh, the fact that it doesn't provide for interest, uh, and fines and penalties and whatever else, the way an ordinary taxpayer purchasing water would have to pay, right? You know, the, the fact that, uh, it's silent as to those things, which, you know, I love the good faith. It's, it's wonderful to say, hey, the, you know, we're two towns, we're, you know, our city and a town, we're gonna try our best to, to be fair and act in good faith, but when you reach an impasse, like you said, there's gotta be things spelled out. Uh, any contract would actually have an arbitration clause, or some sort of clause that says who, uh, determines that. So, um, what we do going forward, uh, now that there's a general agreement as to what that, the dollar amount would've been, had they paid for the water they should've paid for and been charged back for the water they discharged, um, which is just under three hundred thousand dollars. The, uh, the idea is that we'll execute a new intermunicipal agreement that doesn't leave so much to the imagination.
Okay. So you stated, Mr. Furlong, that what's up with Water Board has agreed to this number?
Yes.
Where does the Westport Town Council stand?
Uh, so from what I've been told by the town administrator, they've had discussions, and they've tentatively accepted the agreement.
Tentatively but not officially.
Again, so there, we haven't put an agreement in front of them, it just went in front of the water board the other day. So now we put an agreement together and provide that to them.
So what's the timeline on the agreement, and then a timeline on a new intermunicipal agreement?
So again, with the intermunicipal agreement, uh, their actual one expired in twenty-three, it says that it goes year to year, uh, every, until a, uh, new intermunicipal agreement, uh, is reached. So my expectation would be, uh, over the next, uh, month, you know, we'd get an agreement in place for the settlement amount, and we'd, uh, draft an intermunicipal agreement to put in front of them. Uh, the intermunicipal agreements do need to go, uh, water board approval and council approval as well.
And do they follow budget year of, of July to June, or calendar year?
Not necessar- not necessarily budget year, no.
Okay, just whenever it's made, essentially.
Yeah, typically when they're executed. Uh, the more recent ones that we've done with other towns have been a ten-year term with a, uh, potential for a ten-year extension.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor T. One, Councilor Dean.
This really gets me, if they're not paying interest and late charges, like every single resident in Fall River has to pay if they're late on their water bill. And to say that it's not, you know, it wasn't in the agreement, but the agreement in section three-two basically says that they have to secure compliance system with users and standards provided within this agreement, or otherwise could be amended, but to ensure confor- conformity with the requirements of any agencies of the city. So the city's agency has that in that, that they have to pay, uh, an interest fee or a late fee or what have you. For this to go on for ten years, and I'll be honest with you, I looked at the summary that you submitted, uh, Mr. Furlong, and when this was first done, you weren't in your position now, so it's not against you. But it says on multiple occasions, Fall River has demanded to get records. Where are those multiple occasions, the correspondence? Could we see them?
I can provide copies.
I would like to see copies of that, and I would like legal to take a look at, at this. If the meter wasn't working properly, then that meter should've been fixed right away. How much water did they use? Westport, everybody that's on getting water, they have to pay a bill. What is the payment that they're getting every year? Have we, you know, I heard it was one point seven million, and all of a sudden, then I heard, well, the city thinks one point seven, we think three hundred thousand, and then the settlement, when was the water board meeting on this?
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. However, prior to that, a resolution was filed by myself and Counselor Deon. So why would they even talk about it when you knew we were gonna be talking about it here? So they've already voted on it. So, it's mute point to come before us now. If we knew that this was an issue, you should've held off. Taken you ten years to come up with an agreement, but all of a sudden, we put in a resolution, and boom, we settled it. For two hundred ninety-seven thousand? And you know they're gonna need water again. So, that contract better be airtight, because this is a disservice to the people of Fall River. And I know it wasn't just you, it went from John Frye to Terry to you, that nobody took an initiative. And I'd like to see, how many times were we knocking at their door for money? They, you know, they have the money, they're gonna need more water. They've got problems, I know they have problems, on Sanford Road, and they have problems on, on, uh, Gifford, Gifford's Road. They're gonna need us. But if they're not gonna play fair with us, that's not right. One of the selectmen didn't even know, until he called you and had a conversation with you about extending pipe, he didn't even know that this bill hadn't been paid. And I know they blamed it on the old town administrator, now there's a new town administrator, who works for us, I know him very well, it just, it just doesn't feel right to me. How do people owe us money for ten years? And there's a broken meter. And, and it's not fixed, and then I know, if it's over eighty, they've gotta reduce the valve, if it's under eighty, they've gotta open the valve. And if they're flushing it, who's there to see when they flush that meter? How much water is getting out of there, and what they're not charged for if we're flushing a meter? Distributor owes us money?
No.
Good. Anybody else owe us money?
Not that I'm aware of.
Cuz I hate going in the-
Well, there are a lot of people that owe us money.
But I hate going into, you know, and you know I didn't vote for the water increases, cuz I hate going into people's pockets, but you know, we are gonna raise our residents, raise their water rates, when we've got money hanging out there, I'm sorry. I really would like to table this, get a legal opinion, cuz I think they should've paid us interest. Or a fee. If you have been, and other people have been connecting with them, and they're ignoring us, then I think they owe us more. And I'd like to see what the language is on there, if, whether or not, I mean, has Corporation Council looked at this language in this and said, oh yeah, it's not in there? Has anybody contacted, um, the attorney that wrote this up? Has anybody talked to Attorney Souza to see what was the intent of this? I, I just think it's, I don't know. I just have an issue with it. Because sometimes, you know, uh, we do things for others and not for our own. That's how I kinda feel on this. And I'd like to see, what, what was going back and forth with people? You have the emails, I mean, you're not gonna get ten years, uh, ten, uh, years of emails, but at least give me two. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor T. One, Councilor Dean.
Just a couple of notes on that, uh, our town meter, we believe was always working. The meters within Westport aren't the city's responsibility, those are the town of Westport. If those weren't reading properly, weren't functioning properly, and again, we sent them correspondence telling them that we felt they weren't working properly, they should check them, so just-
Do we see that correspondence, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Furlong. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor T. One, Councilor Dean.
Yeah, I don't disagree with my colleague. I guess the, the first question, what, we have no real obligation to provide water to the town of Westport.
That's true.
Right.
I mean, when they stop paying, we don't have an obligation to keep pumping.
So, from my standpoint-
If you have a contract, you do.
Well, even just reading the contract, we can, we can cancel it, it says term. The term of this agreement shall continue for ten years from the date of execution, at the end of the ten-year term, the agreement shall continue for year to year thereafter, provided however that either party may terminate the same on December thirty-first of any year by giving written notice on or before June thirtieth of such year, so the minute, the minute we didn't receive payment, we should've terminated them and tell them to figure out where they're gonna get their water, start digging wells, do whatever you need to do, there are communities without a water district. I don't agree with the, the abatement, if you're telling us, be- because at the end of the day, you know, I, I don't disagree with my colleagues, we, we get, we get residents that come before us, and, and when they have leaks, don't know about leaks, they're paying a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. And we had to put in, an ordinance in to try to help alleviate some of those issues where if you have a, a multifamily, you know, your tenant's not notifying you of a, of a leaky toilet or something like that, but the fact that another municipality, I mean, because at the end of the day, if we weren't paying Westport, they would've been kicking down our door, right? So, the fact that they have- So, the fact that they have, you have a municipality that owes us close to $500,000 and probably the issue, I think, ultimately comes down to, and it's over an eight-year period or seven-year period, whatever it was, you know, I'm sure they got to go back to town meeting and then have a conversation to pay prior year bills and things like that becomes an issue for them. But that being said, I don't know how we tolerate it in terms of if we feel that the meters themselves are working, then I'd go back to Westport and say, this is what we want. And moving forward on any agreement, I think, number one, it should be interest. Number two, if they want to question anything, it should be similar to an abatement process for real estate tax. They need to, if they want to question a bill, they have to pay it prior to us even having a conversation about whether or not we're going to abate it. Because at the end of the day, I mean, and flushing out water, why is it our responsibility for the flushing out water? That's their system, right? So, why are we giving them a reduction? Tell them to loop their system. You know, there's another number of conversations that could be had, but to do a reduction, because they need to flush out systems, because their systems have dead ends. Quite frankly, it's not the problem of the city of Fall River, right? We're providing water and that's where we should be. And I don't think that they should get any special breaks from any other resident. And I know they pay more than what the residents of Fall River pay, but I just, I just find it, I just find it disheartening that working with another municipality, right? Just understanding what we have to do on a day-to-day, having a municipal agreement in place and to have no payments from 2016 to 2021. I just, you know, I, to me, is a slap in the face and, I don't know. I wouldn't support it. I don't know that we have any say. I think this all falls with the Water Board, right?
Yes, sir.
So, and I would highly encourage the Water Board to say that we're not giving any reduction. That $597,000 is what we need to be paid. I'd also send a bill with interest on it, so the contract is silent. Okay. But it's also silent saying that we can't, that we're not doing it, right? That we're prohibited from charging interest. And tell them if they don't want to pay it, then we shut it off at the city line. Who do you think's going to, they're running to pay, right? Because I don't know how many accounts they have. I'm sure they want their residents to have water, right? So, from my standpoint, pony up the $600,000. We talk about this. Your department needs money. That's $600,000, right? I just, shut it off. That's my statement. That would have been my statement as a city administrator. I would have told them in the meeting, point blank. That's just, you don't want to pay $600,000, we're shutting down, we're closing the water. You have the right to do it to residents. We don't do it. But you have the ability in the ordinance, if a city resident does not pay for water, that we can go right to the street and shut off the water to their house. So, I say shut it off till we get $600,000. That's just me. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C. Two, Counselor Deion?
Yeah, I totally support what was Counselor C. One just stated. It's crazy. My, I'm glad to see, though, that in the discussions, you're going to put it in writing, I'm assuming, with the penalties and interest moving forward. My only other thing is the Fall River Water Department questioned the accuracy and quality of Westport's record-keeping, reporting and meter maintenance. This has to be the only situation I've ever seen where the supplier doesn't keep the records, doesn't do the reporting, doesn't do the maintenance and tell them how much the user owes. The user is doing what the supplier normally does. That's how I'm reading this. Is that correct?
It's not totally accurate. So, there's two meters. There's a meter at the town line that we monitor. And then there's meters within Westport that they monitor. So, they have personnel that do some of this work and report back. We have personnel to do some of this work and report back. I mean, I suppose, you know, in a, in what, at least to me, would be an extremely sort of cynical way of doing business, we could send our people over there at all times to monitor, because we just don't trust them to give us the right information. I think the fact that both sides were basically collaborating to get a reading and they questioned our meter, we questioned their meter, that's really what contributed to the fairly lengthy, you know, breakdown in effective communication. At least, that's what I'm gathering. I mean, I looked at the correspondence. And then, to add to things, they attempted to do this compromise position where $8,000 a month will be paid. That was for three months. And then unfortunately, they were allowed to continue paying that for some period of time thereafter, which was never the intent. So, there's no question, to Counselor Kadeem's point, that there were, there was things that were done not in good faith. But I don't believe in meeting bad faith with bad faith. So, we tried to compromise.
Yeah. Well, if I may, I don't think I'm looking at it as a matter of trust or mistrust. So, let's use, for an example, National Grid. National Grid supplies the city with electricity. Every house has a meter. There's meters in City Hall and everywhere else. Who monitors those meters? Who determines what the bill is? National Grid? Or does the city say, well, we monitor these meters, so let's see if we agree on what our, both, what the meters read? I don't know if I'm asking the question right, saying it right.
The comparison doesn't-
Or it's not even close.
Well, it just, it doesn't resonate personally. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's the same, right? I think here, we have two separate organizations. One saying, yeah, we'll sell a service to you, but simply because of logistics, you have to give us some information about what's happening. And I actually, I think the utilities example could work if you think about a homeowner that has to, you know, go down in their basement and report back to, whether it's a gas company or, you know, whoever it is, something that the company itself can't read inside the house, right? Because that certainly happens.
That's how it used to be.
Yeah, that's how it used to be, right? So, that's probably, to me, a closer approximation. And unfortunately, what happened is, and this is, you know, I think before both our times, the origin of this problem, is that it wasn't being done effectively at some point and both sides alleged that the other was not, either was not maintaining good information or didn't have effective equipment to get the information correctly. And I'm not saying that's an okay thing. It's absolutely not. But I think from a logistics standpoint, to say, okay, Fall River workers now need to go into Westport to check on Westport meters regularly. Now, to do it once a quarter or, you know, once a month, that makes all the sense in the world. You know, trust but verify, right?
So, did we do that quarterly?
I don't believe that we did it.
Or did we not do it at all?
I don't think, at the beginning of this, we did it at all.
Okay.
And so, when, you know, Paul took up the mantle, you know, starting in '21 and said, all right, at the very least, you got to start paying. Like, we'll figure out that five-year lapse, because that's a huge problem. But at the very least, we can't continue to build up the debt. Got them back on the correct payment. And the benefit of that, I think arguably, we can say whether it's a benefit or not, is that we actually got some metrics as to how much water they were using and how much they were discharging. And the thing about the discharge is that, you know, notwithstanding all the other concessions that may have been made, you know, regarding this particular agreement, the discharge is something that was part of the contract. And so, you know, agree or not, that was something that was agreed to long before the lapse. You know, where they, you know, there was certain requirements for water quality that had to be discharged. And so, there was an agreement to, you know, let them have a credit for that discharge, because they weren't using the water. Good, bad or indifferent, that was the agreement. So, we're trying to honor at least the spirit of that. But I think, you know, the point is well-taken, that there wasn't somebody checking. And there should have been somebody checking. And so, part of whatever we do now, and frankly, since 2021, there has been a much closer monitoring. And I give, you know, Mr. Furlan credit for saying this has to stop, stopping it, and then putting in place processes where it'll not happen again. And with the new intermunicipal agreement, it definitely won't happen again, because there'll even be better constraints on what happens if there's a lapse. It certainly can't go on for five years. That's bananas. That's crazy.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Furlan, do you know if Westport, the people who have, does anyone have two meters with a backflow device on some of those? Are we monitoring those at all? There's a number of residents in Fall River that have two meters, one for their lawn, one for their household, and they use a backflow device. Do you know? Are we monitoring that at all?
I'm not sure whether Westport has, typically in Fall River, we call it a sprinkler meter. So, if somebody sprinkles their lawn, they can have a second meter where there's not a sewer charge. I'm not aware.
That second meter requires a backflow device and an initial charge of $50 a year for that.
Yes.
Do we not know whether Westport's implementing that at all?
So, in the intermunicipal agreement and per mass general law, any registered water system has to have a backflow program in place. Fall River specifically, we have, we allow separate sprinkler meters. Other communities don't allow that. It's just whatever goes into your house if you use it, if you tap your sprinkler off afterwards. We have that program for our residents. I'm not sure whether Westport has a program like that, sprinkler meters or not. Typically, most of the time in Westport too, you got to remember that their residents are only charged for the water rate.
Not the sewer.
Not the sewer, because most of their residents aren't sewer. And the other thing to note is to just within the current intermunicipal agreement that's in place, the markup is 70% over our residential rate.
Yep.
They don't pay the same as our residents. They pay us right off the bat, what goes through the town line, 70% higher than what our residents pay.
Thank you. Counselor C. Day, Counselor Sampson?
I just wanted to put my piece in that I absolutely support my colleagues in this. You know, we don't get support from our surrounding communities. They don't come over. They never rescue us. They're never looking to give us any help, whether it be housing, affordable housing, anything. And the fact that they didn't pay their water bill, I mean, not to just beat a dead horse, but people come down before us all the time. And so, and now we're going to pass this and give them a $300,000 deduction, because they didn't pay and they didn't look and their meters, I don't care if they paid, you know, a thousand times more than the Fall River residents. I just don't. That's their bill. They should have paid it. They should have looked at it. And I support Counselor Kadeem and the shut it off. If they don't want to pay it, shut it off. I think we should have T-shirts made that say, shut it off. I just think it's awful. Pay their bill. So, I just wanted to say that. And it's not that often. I think a lot of us may all agree on the same thing, but this may be something that, you know, it doesn't look too good. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C. Six, Counselor Potty?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right. So, just so I'm clear, the proposed settlement has tentatively been accepted by the town of Westport, subject to the vote. Here's my, here's my thoughts. And first off, this is like years and years in the making, right? So, unfortunately, Mr. Furlan's sitting here, taking all the whacks tonight, because, you know, it's been going on for years and years. And I want to appreciate the proactiveness that you're probably starting to do now, because it wasn't happening before. So, unfortunately, you both are sitting here getting whacked around. Should we have shut the water off or not? I don't know. Did the mayor give a directive to the, to his department head to go shut the water off in Westport? Probably not, right? So, like, there's probably a lot involved and you've been pretty mum on the fact that you haven't gone to shut the water off for an apparent reason. Whatever that may be, I don't know. We don't need to get into it. We can talk about what we're going to do going forward. But what I would like to do, whether it's by a motion between this body, back to the Whatupu Water Board, or the, yeah, the Whatupu Water Board, and then back to the town of Westport, is from the council's perspective, it sounds to me that we're not, we are not in favor of your proposed settlement. Sounds like we want the other $300,000 of money used. And I recognize there was a, there's probably some loose language here, some not-so-strong language. It could have ended up in litigation. But at the end of the day, we're the ones who have the supply of water. So, if we can't come to a term, we can shut it off, right? So, with that being said, how do we get that other $300,000? Because it's a lot of money. It can do a lot of good for your budget and a lot of other city budgets. We're going to be, we're crying, we don't have enough money for this. We don't have much money for that. How do we get that money? If the city, would it help if the city council buy, if the council votes to, even though we can't order you to do anything, or urge you to reopen negotiations with the town of Westport to get that extra $300,000? Would that be helpful? So, you're not the only one going at this alone?
I'll answer that question just, but the starting point, I would like to acknowledge, is that if Westport were to have paid when they should have, for that five-year period, we believe that they would have paid around that $300,000. That the amount of money that they would have paid for water that was used, minus the money, minus what, you know, would have been charged from water that was charged back or discharged, right? Would have come down to $300,000. So, what you're asking for, and I mean, I mean, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor, right? And so, if this council sends a letter to the Water Board and the Water Board is inclined to reconsider their position and based upon that, the mayor says, hey, go back and renegotiate, I'll renegotiate. But I think it's important to note that what I would be negotiating is something that is significantly more than what they would have paid had they paid on time. So, then I think the next position is, had they paid on time, okay, then that's, you know, what they would have paid. And because they didn't pay on time, they're not entitled to any consideration.
But the-
I get that.
Okay. But the alternative is, if they don't pay it, because the legislative body is now urging it to happen, right? And hopefully, the mayor comes on board with it as well. Both legislative and executive branch are pushing the town of Westport to pay their bills. Then, if they don't do it, what are you going to do?
So, so I think the answer of this body is to shut it off. And I understand that.
No, I don't necessarily hear that. I hear they have to pay their bills.
They do.
They should pay them on time accurately and all that other stuff.
Yes.
And if they don't, then we should have an ability to shut it off. And I think we should give the mayor and the department head the ability to do that. Granted, I understand one thing. The entire town of Westport's going to be in pandemonium when they find out that their water is turned off and that we're all going to get the phone calls, right? Let's make that clear, right? Be ready for that. That's probably why it's never happened in the first place. So, I think there needs to be an ability to negotiate and try to get as much of it as possible. I know we can all sit here and say, it sounds really nice. Let's turn the water off, right? But trust me, when somebody calls us that they don't have water, it's not going to be a pretty conversation any of us are going to have, right?
And I would say, just so you understand the thought process, whether it's acceptable or not, I'm just going to tell you, you know, why, you know, my thought was, let's try to make a deal rather than just say, you haven't paid for years, shut it off. Is that I was, and I think the mayor, you know, we were agreed on this, not inclined to have homeowners suffer for something that the town administration did. Because that's who would suffer from that, right? If you turn the water off, the large majority of the folks that would really feel that, well, all of them, would be the people that are trying to turn the tap on or turn their bathtub on to wash their kid at night or fill up a pot to make pasta, right? But it's the town that actually is the bad actor. And so, therefore, why does the homeowner have to suffer for the bad action of the town? That's why we tried to compromise.
Help me understand this. If I live in Westport, which I don't, I live in Fall River, I don't want. If I lived in Westport, and who's charging the Westport residents' water rates?
The town of Westport.
So, the town is collecting money for a water rate.
Correct.
They're keeping it within their budget, whatever, however they do it at their town. And they're charging, and we charge, we charge Westport.
Yes.
So, I'm sure they're not doing it for, you know, a nonprofit. They're probably making money, right? So, they're going to have to raise and appropriate the amount of money, just like any claim is. So, what would stop us from going to the town of Westport and filing, not shutting it off, but filing a supplemental claim for the money that is owed and then let the town of Westport figure it out?
So, nothing. So, but for the willingness on both sides to try to reach a settlement, because that settlement's always the thing that comes in lieu of litigation, right? We would file that claim and, you know, probably try to enjoin and then attach whatever the town is collecting from their ratepayers until we're made whole. I mean, so that's how you would do that. It's how you would do that with a town or with a business or an individual.
Payment plan? Would a payment plan be acceptable?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, that's, those are the other options. I think we were just trying to, one, we were trying to facilitate a neighborly agreement, which maybe the time for neighborliness has passed. I understand if that's the sentiment. But we were trying to maintain some civility in a situation that frankly, I don't think we had been treated fairly, but it wasn't anyone at the table who had done the unfair treatment.
I get that.
So, I think we were just trying to start fresh and move forward. And, you know, I will say that the opportunity to expand the sale of water to Westport also opens other opportunities in neighboring towns for the city of Fall River, which is certainly part of the calculation.
Okay.
That if we can maintain that relationship, expand what we're doing and get closer to other towns, which I believe we would, from an infrastructure standpoint, it might give us an opportunity to also think about new agreements with new partners.
All right. I'd like to make this in the form of a motion that the city council, on behalf of the entire council, send a letter to the Whatupu Water Board, the town of Westport, the mayor and the department head, urging you to collect by ever, whatever may, wait, whatever way, method possible to collect that additional 300 and something thousand. to collect that additional three hundred and something thousand dollars as soon as possible, with an update to the council within sixty days. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion made, is there a second on the motion?
Second for discussion? What was it, the additional three hundred thousand, that we said?
He still has the floor. Motion has been made and seconded. We have a discussion, is that it, Counselor, yield?
I'm, I'll yield for now.
Thank you, Counselor C one, Counselor Kadim.
Now I understand why the Vice Chairman of the School Committee didn't want my colleague to be the chairman. I agree with him, listen, you, the, the funny thing, does, does anybody understand or know percentage-wise? So for Fall River residents who have not paid their electric bill or their tax bill, and they get a notice that in ninety days, your gas or electric's gonna be shut off, how many people actually get into a payment plan or actually pay? I would, I would guess that it's a process-
Majority.
Right, ninety percent. So what I would suggest to my colleagues is that we shut off the water, there's a requirement that we give ninety-day notice, and I will guarantee you, the minute that you give ninety-day notice to this, to the town of Westport that you're shutting off water, because I don't know how many accounts there are, there's gonna be, they're not coming to us, they're going to Westport, right? And as a resident of Westport, if I am paying my water bill to the town of Westport, and then I'm finding out that Westport is not paying their bill, that's an issue. Right, that's an issue. So unless the city of New Befford is working with Dartmouth to supply them water, then Dartmouth will then work with Westport to supply them water through New Befford, we hold all the cards, okay? So I understand the neighborly situation, I love Mr. Rogers, he was great, you know? I, I truly understand that, but, and I'm not saying that it's, it's the current individuals who are at the table right now, but there is a bill owed, right? For municipalities, i- it is just disingenuous for us to send tax bills, to send uh, water bills, sewer rates. We do tax liens, we do real estate liens, so we'll lean people's property when they don't pay their bills, but a municipality is not gonna pay a bill. And nobody has an issue with that, and we just want, we wanna say, hey, kumbaya, let's, let's knock off three hundred thousand dollars. And meanwhile, I'm sitting here as a counselor advocating for this department to get more revenue, increase rates, and I'm gonna sign off on the town of Westport not paying three hundred thousand dollars.
Point of information, point of information, maybe I misspoke, I wanna just make one thing crystal clear. I don't see anything in this correspondence that has anything to do with a million dollars. I want the money that the town of Westport owes us, that's what, maybe I didn't make it clear, I was saying three hundred thousand dollars or whatever.
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Absolutely.
Do you want the money that the town of Westport owes us, or do you want the money that the town of Westport would've paid had they paid on time?
I want the money that is owed or paid on time, I don't care, we want the money that we-
Excuse me, see, I think- Point of clarification, the difference being principal and interest?
No, so, so there's, there's three ways to calculate this.
Just so we're not, we're not getting, we're not, it's not, it's clear, we're, we're reading, they say we have a compromise of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. We're hearing numbers that we, they owe us another three hundred thousand dollars, there's a, something here that says they have a balance of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So unless I can't read, which is probably right, because I don't have my glasses today, I don't see anything here that says they owe us a million dollars.
Alright, so had they, had they been billed for every gallon that went through the pipe, without discharge, without a discharge credit, it would be five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, alright? If they were to be credited for what was discharged, we estimate that that would bring it down to that two hundred and seventy-something thousand, that's the settlement amount. So the settlement amount is an estimate of what they actually used. However, if we say, you know what, you should've maintained your meters better, you don't get to get that money knocked off for the discharge, because even though we're estimating, and we have a good faith basis to believe what the discharge would've been, you guys had the op- had the responsibility to maintain your meters, you didn't do it, so you owe us the whole thing. And we're gonna treat you like any other taxpayer, we're also gonna add principal and interest. That's where Counselor Pereira is getting the over a million dollar mark. So once you start adding interest and penalties, you can very easily get over that million dollar mark, and frankly, way past it, alright? That said, just purely from a legal standpoint, I looked at the agreement, I, I truly don't think there's a basis for penalties and interest. You're also talking about a settlement where there is some compromise, so there are, it's not that you ignore the rules, it's that you try to come to an agreement that everyone can live with. And so those are the three numbers, the million plus is full boat, principles and interest. Five hundred and seventy-nine thousand is all the water that went through. Just under three hundred thousand is all the mon- all the water that they would've paid for had they been paying under the agreement in place at the time.
Alright, on, on my same point of information, are you expecting to get a check of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars from the town of Westport?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you Counselor, Counselor C one, continue.
Thank you, so, I, I, I understand that there's no language currently listed in the agreement. So I am okay with the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, that's what's owed, that's what I think we should collect. If we don't collect it, I will not support the water department coming down, I'm just telling you right now, and I'm the biggest advocate on this council, giving you guys a budget. So if I find out, um, and this, mark my words, I will vote no on every increase, every project that comes back before us. I will not add an increase to any rates or anything like that if we do not collect the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Westport. My question, and I don't need you to go back and give me ten years' worth of um, correspondence, all I wanna know, per the policy, Westport was supposed to notify us of all their hydrant flushings, did they do that? Did they give you the meter readings, everything per the policy that's listed in this agreement? If not, they're in violation, so I don't wanna hear it, that's another argument that's gonna go there, it, it's very clear as to what it calls for. They're supposed to be, if they, and, and if they disagree with something, it was, there was supposed to be notification as per the policy. So if they didn't do any of that, then that's on them, I, I just, to me, there should be a letter saying, we want five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and whatever else it is, because I can't remember it, or the water to get shut off in ninety days, and we, we terminate the, the agreement, that's, that's just me. It, it just flies in the face, as I mentioned before, that we hold taxpayers to a different criteria than we do a municipality, right? So, and, and I, and I, and I truly understand and I appreciate it, because, because I think in normal six cir- circumstances, you would want municipalities to work together, right? Intermunicipal agreements, regionalizing, that, that all makes sense. But I, I, maybe I don't understand the entire story, I just, I just think that Westport took advantage of us. You know, and obviously, we, we bear some responsibility for it, but at the end of the day, they use the water. We sent water over to, to Westport in that amount, they owe the city of Fall River, it needs to get paid. Just like we would hold everybody else to come before that, so, that's just my take. Um, and I, I'll support the, I guess the motion that's on the table to send that letter out.
Hey, Counselor C, seat five, Counselor Pereira.
Attorney Akins, when did you first find out about Westport owing us money?
Six, seven months ago? Um, no, there was a meeting, so there was a meeting with a bunch of Westport folks.
That was the first time you heard about it, it was six, seven months ago that they had a meeting?
Yeah.
With everybody?
Yeah, maybe, maybe a little more than that.
It's been owed for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Furlan has been before us needing more money, never once did Mr. Furlan share, you know, we do have some money out there that I'm trying to get into Fall River from Westport, we never heard about that. Counselor Ponce wants to put in a resolution to send a letter, but like I said at the beginning, you had a meeting last Wednesday. Your board already voted on this, correct?
Yes.
So your board voted on it, they're not gonna change their vote now. So it's too late, why would you have the board vote on it, you've had it there for all these years. All of a sudden, now the board's gonna vote on it, when Counselor Deanna and I put in a resolution. You knew we were gonna be talking about it, oh god, we're gonna talk about it, so let's, let's pass something. So that resolution is gonna do nothing, because you already took a vote.
That was the first meeting, Water Board meeting since a tentative agreement, so it was put on that agenda.
You knew that it was coming here, so whatever the council says, doesn't make a difference, because the board, Water Board can do whatever the Water Board wants to do. Without our say. But I just think, like my colleague in seat number one said, you're treating our residents differently. Do you think everybody in Westport paid their water bill on time all the time? Probably not. And I bet that individual that didn't pay it on time, had to pay interest, had to pay some kind of a penalty, whatever. And, you know, I know from personal experience, getting a water bill that was way crazy, like six hundred bucks, that two people in a house. How many times you think we take a bath or flush the toilet, come on, and there was no leak? Oh, well, there had to be. Put in an abatement, yeah, brought it down to maybe four hundred, I usually pay one ninety, two hundred, two twenty-five, whatever. But even when we, as, as citizens here, go for a question, the amount of money that we've used for water, it doesn't touch our sewer. So you can get it on water, but the total amount of whatever your bill was, you're still paying the sewer on that, that was crazy. Because when Counselor Mitchell and I put that in, that people would be able to go in and appeal something, we thought sewer was included too.
It is, in the abatement policy.
Wasn't on mine, I'll show you the bills.
Fifty percent.
And on other people, I mean, I just don't think it's right.
Yes, it is.
And you've never brought that to our attention before, where the council could've put in input and said, no, you know, yeah, we think we should send them a, a notice that we're gonna shut their water off in ninety days. I agree with Counselor in seat number one, Westport's not gonna call us city councils, they're not gonna call us. They're gonna call their selectmen, and maybe they should, because the selectmen haven't kept up with this either. I watch Water Board meetings, and sometimes I watch Westport's too. And Westport's got so much money, they turned back, what, five million dollars to the state? Kinda crazy. I just, I wanna see where all this documentation is, I don't, I mean, I'll vote for, for the resolution, I don't think it's really to send a letter, I don't think it's gonna get it anywhere, because you already voted. But at least they'll know where our feelings are. And for the administration not to know about it until the last six months, how long has the mayor been here, he didn't know about them owing us money? We didn't know about it, he didn't know about it. We didn't know about it. And we wanna work together, but you gotta give us information, like, hey guys, I'm having a problem here, let's work together.
You, Counselor?
Boy, do I wanna say a lot more, but no, I'll yield.
I could get shit off from school committee members as well. Counselor C three, Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President, gentlemen, um, I just, maybe I missed this, but was there a specific reason or why you compromised from the five hundred down to the two something?
There's probably two reasons.
Sorry?
Two reasons.
Yeah.
I'm a lawyer, that's what I do, right? I mean, I try to settle, and, and settlement is always a negotiation where um, nobody walks away happy, alright? And in this case, it was probably, you know, too much of a compromise, I understand that. The second reason is that this two something, in my mind, represents what the actual water that was used.
Say that again?
It represents the water that was actually used.
Was actually, okay.
Minus the water that was discharged. So, you know, ultimately, what we're talking about is, is we're charging them really without penalty for what they used back during those five years. Really in the interest of, you know, the relationship has been back on track for the last three and a half years. Um, let's try to continue in that way, there are other opportunities within Westport to expand the, the water distribution. And so it just, it was more an effort to, to kind of, you know, build on the good and try to resolve what had happened in the past that, that frankly, uh, I think there were mistakes made on both sides.
Right, do you think too, that it could be that the folks on the other side might've thought that um, Fall River might've made more, more, some, more mistakes, and they, they, and, and that's part of the good negotiation, where if they brought it down, where you, you were being goodwill, bringing it down to two ninety, because they might've thought, um, you know, I remember talking to Paul about the bleeders, um, that they were a little off in Westport, and um, but I'm just wondering, that, that, that's, you know, a big jump from five something to two something.
Well, their, their starting point was that we owed them twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, and-
Right, well, you know.
Swear to god.
I can tell you, I, I analyzed this, uh, you, you know, Seth saw this, books and books of spreadsheets that I had analyzing this, uh, multiple different ways. You know, and what it came down to on, on this final agreement is if we take what their, their water usage was, you know, over the last couple of years since we've had a good account, we've had good record keeping in place, you take their usage and you spread that out over those past years, even though now they use more water, because they have a new hotel in town, they have a new meat processing facility, which uses a fair amount of water within their town. I don't know the amounts, because I don't look at their registers, uh, they have a grow facility in town, so that's increased water usage within the town now. But if you take their usage now, and you spread it back over those years, you subtract out what they paid over those years, it comes out right in this, what the settlement was, that's what made it okay for me for that settlement.
Alright, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Furlan, you could find out how much those new hotel and the new market charge and what they, what they are paying?
Yeah, if, correct, if, if I asked Westport-
You'd say you don't know, but we could find out.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm sure Westport would provide that to us, but again, I took it that the current usage is more than what it was in those past years. So, again, that's why I used that number, the current usage, rather than going back and try to shave those off of what they might've not been in the past.
Thank you very much, there be no further questions, there is a motion, Counselor C one, have a follow-up question?
As a point of clarification on the motion, if I may?
Yeah.
So there's no, uh, if I can for the clerk. I would like to make sure I take that numbers out of it, and urge that the administration and the department head get the amount that is owed to the city, whether that's five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, whether that's two hundred thousand dollars, there's, there's, whatever you have to do, get the total amount owed, that is, that is what I wanna make clear. So if it's another three hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred and ninety-two on top of the two hundred and ninety-two you're expected, whatever you have to do, please get the entire amount, that was the purpose of my resolution, my, my motion for the letter to be sent, to make sure that happens.
Maybe we should clarify what you want him to exactly get, you want him to get principal and interest on top of what they owe?
If that's total amount owed, then that answer is yes.
Principal and interest brings it significantly over the five hundred thousand, is that what you want me to do?
What is that amount, one point seven, I'm hearing?
I don't know that it's one point seven, that, that, that sounds like a-
We really don't know what the number is.
It's probably closer to one point three.
That's why I'm trying to say that I don't wanna put a number on it, get the total amount owed, do what you gotta do-
Oh, I didn't put a number on it, Counselor, just you want principal and interest, whatever it was used.
That's what it is, get it done.
You tell me, you mean, just, if we're gonna give him an objective to get, let's get, let's make it clear so he'll know exactly what we're seeking.
The answer is yes, that's the purpose of my re- my motion.
Okay.
Was there a second to that?
There was.
Already, okay.
No, it's a new, well, same thing, it's a new motion, that's what his intention were, why don't you rephrase the motion?
My motion is to urge the um, mayor, the Watupaw Water Board, and the department head to get the total amount of debt owed to the city of Fall River for the use of water from the town of Westport, including principal and interest.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is a second on the motion, Counselor C one, Counselor-
Thank you, I'm, I'm letting the, uh, my colleague back as the chairman of the school committee. It was more than I was looking for, I was, I was conceding to the, to the interest since it's not in the contract, so, but if you wanna do a principal and interest, I, I support that. During, and just a quick question, during any of these conversations, well, I guess two questions. Do we know if they have an enterprise fund for the, their water department, or is it through their general fund?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I know in the past, I believe they went into the general fund.
The general fund.
They may have been set up recently as an enterprise.
Okay, because I was gonna ask if they had an enterprise fund, if they shared any of their financials with us in terms of retained earnings or anything like that. But if it's going in the general fund, and I, I understand Westport, which is why I'm okay, if we work out on a payment plan, I'm not suggesting that we need to get the payment all at once, but if, even with a new agreement, if it's a couple of, you know, a hundred thousand every year, or whatever the case may be, I would be okay with that, but I, I, I do just wanna point out, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, they haven't paid us. Twenty eighteen, Westport's certified free cash, just under one point three million. Twenty nineteen, one point four million. Twenty twenty was six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, twenty twenty-one, um, just under one point one. Twenty twenty-two, one point six million, and then twenty twenty-three, two point one million, so, I just- Just wanna say, out of those years, some of that free cash could have been appropriated so that the water bills were paid. But I, I'm assuming they also have some surplus revenue coming in, and I would think there's either a special revenue account or an enterprise fund for that to be able to pay out the bills, uh, but maybe not, maybe it's just the general fund, so, with that, I yields.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, gentlemen, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good, Mr. President, could we make a motion to table this, for this to come back to us when they get this information?
This has already been, you could, we could.
Keep it on the table, I make a motion to table.
Motion to table has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table carries, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have three individuals who have signed up to speak after committee on finance, um, just want everyone to know, you have three minutes. When you come down to the table- When you come down to the table, please state your name and address for the record. All three individuals are out-of-town residents, so we'll need a motion to waive the rules for each one individually. First, we have Keith Mishon Jr., subject matter Fall River Educators Association bargaining with the school committee. So a motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One at a time, please. If you're coming down with... Excuse me? All of them, well, no, because it's three minutes at a time. Gets confusing, and there might be questions and answers. Please, I'll call you down next.
All right, thank you for the time. Keith Mishon, president of the Fall River Educators Association, and we're here tonight to present to you a petition that's been signed by over eight hundred of our members over the last week in support of our bargaining team. So I'll read the petition to you. Fall River City Council, I join with my fellow members of the Fall River Educators Association in calling on you to settle a fair contract without delay. We have been bargaining since January two thousand twenty-four and seek your immediate action in settling all outstanding issues. The city has a chance to invest in the future and transform its schools. With tens of millions of dollars in new state aid and annual surplus by the Fall River Public Schools amounting to five million dollars in each of the past two fiscal years, Fall River has never been in a better position to meet the urgent needs of our schools and invest in its future. The time is now for you to do your part in supporting an agreement that includes fair and competitive compensation, which will enable Fall River to retain and recruit quality educators. A modern parental leave policy that is inclusive of all families, which will allow educators to care for our children in the same way we care for our students. Language that respects the expert judgment of Fall River Public School educators. There is no time to waste for Fall River's elected leaders to properly invest in our school system and in turn, in our students' futures. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave right on the table. Thank you.
Wait, what is that?
Next, we have Alvin D'Souza, also out-of-town resident, entertain a motion to waive the rules. Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, what was in the box?
The petition.
Oh, the petition.
I believe it's the petition, correct?
It's heavy. Yeah, petition. All right, greetings, everyone. Hope you're having a good night. We're at a Crossroads in Fall River. A colleague of mine in the science department just told me that her rent went from eight hundred to fourteen hundred over the course of two months this summer. And a steak plate at Caravello is over twenty dollars, so clearly, things have changed. And yet, here we are, six months and a dozen bargaining meetings later, and the school committee is still acting like it's two thousand eight, when I graduated. I picked two thousand eight specifically because that's about when things started changing for teachers in Fall River. For sixteen years, the wages given to teachers have only gone down. It's been embarrassing. In fact, over that ten-year period, it's gone down by about six percent, right? And yet, what a teacher in Fall River is expected to do has only increased, and the age of retirement has increased, and the days have increased, right? And I really don't like this because I really love the city. I'm from here. I went to Durfee. I love my job. And when people talk bad about the city, it actually really aggravates me. But that's why I'm here, right? Because I love this place. And I'm begging for you and the city council that hopefully watches this, to make some real changes, right? Right now, we're stuck at seven percent, five percent, five percent over the next three years. But when you take into inflation, it's really more like five percent, two percent, two percent. And that's just not enough, right? I could go to Brockton, Lowell, Providence, and get a twenty percent raise. I could go to New Bedford and get a ten percent raise, right? It's not enough when we know for the past five years the Chapter Seventy funding that we get from the state has increased an average of ten percent every year. Where have those tens of millions of dollars gone? Where are they gonna go in the next few years? And I'm not the only one with this opinion. You might have noticed that if you go on Facebook after bargaining meetings, the city council puts out these little graphics where they try to spin things, and...
City council or school committee members?
The school committee, I'm sorry. Let the record show, it was the school committee. Anyway, they put up these graphics. They put up these graphics.
We got our own problems. We got the cows in Westport.
Hey, you're cutting into my time.
The cows in Westport are gonna die at theirs because we're gonna shut them off.
I get an extra twenty seconds at least. Anyway, the, these graphics come down very fast because the response is overwhelmingly negative. So what I'm trying to say is that for you guys, this is a slam dunk. If you want people to like you and vote for you, if you come out in support of us, you will get those votes. These are engaged people. These are people that are gonna show up at the ballot, and they will remember the fact that you supported them and their children, right, when they need it most. My best friend is very active in the city, and he's lived here for a while. He's a great guy. He just had a baby girl, and she's beautiful, healthy. I'm so happy for him. But it breaks my heart because he told me he's gonna have to leave the city because Fall River is not making the investments it needs to in education. And he's right. And I know, me, my love for the city is only gonna go so far. At some point, I need to provide for my family, right? I need the time, and I need the money. I need to be compensated appropriately. I feel like I need to grow up and get real and realize that this city doesn't really value my time anymore. So I did this at the school committee meeting last time, but I think it was instructive, so I'm gonna do it again, and maybe I can get those twenty seconds back for this. There are a hundred and, a hundred thirty-nine positions open for teachers, long-term subs, the like, paraprofessionals. It's actually like two hundred positions if you include guidance counselors, school psychologists, janitors, nurses. Now, Fall River reports a fifteen-to-one student-to-teacher ratio, right? So that's like two thousand kids, two thousand kids. There's only like ten thousand kids enrolled. So that's twenty percent of our student body is not getting the education they deserve. And by the way, this disproportionately affects students of color and students with disabilities. So on top of the moral imperative to make sure that we take care of the most vulnerable among us, it's also in your best interest. These are your voters' children. And with that, I yield.
No more coffee for that guy. Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadeen?
You lost me on the fifteen-to-one. Can you say that again?
Too fast. Yeah, so the student-to-teacher ratio in Fall River reported to DESI is about fifteen-to-one. So we have fifteen students for every one teacher. So because we have a hundred and fifty vacancies for, I'm not including the janitors and stuff like that, just direct classroom instructors. We have about two thousand people, you know, missing, or two thousand students that are sitting in the cafeteria, you know, not learning to read.
Thank you, Alex. Good job. And stay away from the coffee.
And I just, I just will say that a steak plate at Caravello for twenty dollars is still a good deal. I'm just gonna say that.
Next, we have Robert Gorman, subject, let's entertain a motion to waive the rules first, please. Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Come on down, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Robert Gorman, and I have twelve years of teaching experience, eight of which have been spent at Durfee High in the math department. I've spent my career developing expertise in the area of instructing children, of meeting them where they are, of creating and adapting lessons to their needs. Across the district, but especially at the secondary level, we are being given curricula for our struggling students and are being told not to adapt it, but to implement it with fidelity, and that's the key word there. As a personal example, at the high school, freshman students taking non-honors Algebra I classes are provided with Carnegie Learning. This is a text-heavy curriculum that is intended for students that are at reading, at grade-level reading or above. We have a literacy issue in Fall River. We're getting students that are more used to reading abbreviated text messages than novels. It's been my experience that they do not find success when asked to learn new math material through dense text alone. Our first year of implementing Carnegie in full was in two thousand twenty-one. That first year, after getting to know our students and attempting the first few lessons as written, my team began to go through each chapter of the Carnegie Learning Curriculum and adapted it into a format that would better suit our kids. We altered the text to simplify language towards the beginning of the unit, altered the nature of some of the lessons to make them more accessible, and ramped up the language as the unit went on. Our main concern was that the students were able to master the actual math first before moving on to complex word problems and ultimately proving their knowledge through a unit project. When we began implementing these adaptations, our students engaged more, were more successful, and felt more optimistic about math. We were eventually told not to act with autonomy by adapting the material that first year. The messaging from higher up was that we were to teach the textbook as is, to not adapt the material because they wanted to determine the effectiveness of the curriculum as it came. They wanted us to use my students as guinea pigs. I was not okay with this. My team was not okay with this. Those of us with professional status continued adapting the material anyways. We didn't become teachers to provide quality assurance at our students' expense. My math class before Carnegie was a place for my students to really discover. We used radars attached to calculators on the halls so students could explore graphs. They dreamt of what their future would look like with family budget projects. When I became a teacher, I thought that my job was to make connections with students in service of creating lessons with them in mind, to teach them to advocate for themselves and their needs, and to get them to become better functional citizens of Fall River. When my colleagues and I are robbed of our autonomy, the way the application of this one-size-fits-all curriculum has, it does a massive disservice to our students. You're paying us for our expertise. This is not an issue that is limited to math. This issue is seen in English and science, and it is emerging in history. Teacher autonomy is being curtailed across the board. These curriculums are being chosen because they've been vetted by DESI as high-quality. The crazy thing is that if you look at the DESI evaluations for the curriculum that they're choosing, DESI themselves suggests that the curriculum be supplemented and adapted. And yet, we're being told to approach it with fidelity. Why aren't we implementing it as DESI suggests? I don't know. When I talk to teachers that have left Fall River for Totten or Somerset or Hole, the number one thing they talk to me about after pay is autonomy. At these new places, they're trusted to do their job. They don't feel micromanaged. They're thriving with their newfound capacity for creativity. I can show you studies where autonomy is closely connected to turnover rate. All we ask of, all we'll ask of whoever will listen to us is that we're allowed to teach. We want to be more than babysitters or facilitators. We wanna see our kids succeed. We wanna do our jobs. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys wanna run into a regular meeting? You wanna take a break?
No, keep going.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Second.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee on Finance is now adjourned. Hold off, hold off for a second. Good luck. City Council, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby? Pereira? Ponti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Camara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a switche to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised, such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for confirmation of the appointment of Tim McCoy to the Conservation Commission.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call.
Motion carries. Rocco?
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadeen?
President.
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Pereira? Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Camara?
Yes. I also wanna know, and I forgot to mention, I know I mentioned it earlier, but this regular meeting, Counselor Kilby reached out to me, and he will not be able to make it today. He does have a prior commitment. Madam Clerk?
Item two is the mayor's request for the appointment of Christopher Boyle to the Conservation Commission. Excuse me, this is a reappointment.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the mayor's request for the appointment of Donna Valenti to the Cultural Council.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four A is the mayor's request for the reappointment of Jason Bouchard Noraki to the Historical Commission.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Four B is the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment of Jonathan Lima to the Historical Commission.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And four C is the mayor's request for the appointment of Joyce Rodrick to the Historical Commission.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is a communication from the mayor in a quitclaim deed conveying one-twelve Pleasant Street, which is the former DePaul Street Elementary School, from the Flint Neighborhood Association to the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Roll call.
Rocco? Anna Motion, Counselor C. Two, you wanna...
Yeah, um, so my concern is twofold. It wasn't, from my understanding, it wasn't until the Neighborhood Association found a buyer for this property who was going to put in affordable units that the city stepped in and blocked the sale. If that's the case, I have a hard time voting yes to adopt this. Secondly, I don't know, and this can be confirmed, that supposedly, at a public meeting, one of my colleagues stated that they shouldn't be able to sell the school, can't sell the school, I don't know. Because that building has already been promised to somebody, to whom I don't know, and I don't know the validity of the statement. But both of these things concern me regarding the school. With that, I yield.
So you don't, you don't know the validity, if it was accurate, inaccurate, or... I mean, we're making, we're saying, hold on, I'm asking you, Counselor. Do you know the validity?
I'm leaving it up to the individual to, I know that there was a buyer. I know the buyer was gonna put in affordable units. The city blocked the sale, yes. Based on the fact that they owned the building too long, didn't complete it in time. But I'm sure we all know that that's happened before, that people have gone over their time limit. But the fact that it involves affordable housing, when we have such a crisis with encampments, et cetera, et cetera, veterans needing housing, the whole subject just really disturbs me. As far as the individual saying that that building has already been promised to somebody, that I can't tell you is fact.
Try to make it clear.
The individual's here, and if they choose to speak on it, they can, and if not, that's fine, too. With that, I yield.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Finance. Second.
I wanna speak on it before.
Anna Motion, Counselor C. Five, Counselor Vice President of the Prairie.
I wanna speak on it before. I saw something on Facebook where Mr. Caesar, who is the head of the Neighborhood Association, had put that it was being taken back by the city because the mayor and I wanted it for veteran housing. I'm not speaking on behalf of the mayor, but I never said they wanted it for veteran housing. A few years ago, I went to a Flint Neighborhood meeting at the senior center in the Flint. I asked at that time what they were doing with the DePaul school to help out. There was asbestos in the building. Had the asbestos been removed? Where did it get disposed of? The criteria for removal of asbestos is pretty stringent. But I went there because I never said that, and I'm sick and tired of seeing something that says, oh, you know, that this was said. Anybody that knows me knows, I don't have a problem telling you what I think. But Counselor Reposo was at that meeting as well. It was never said that there was a buyer for that building. I never talked about the buyer for the building. I did hear after that a buyer came, and that buyer has bought two pieces of property on Bedford, on Pleasant Street. However, this has been going on for... However, this has been going on for quite some time. When the Flint Neighborhood Association came in to buy the Deval School, I was on the real estate committee, and I said that they should be allowed to get it. It would be a useful purpose for that neighborhood. A few years later, I found out through Mr. Caesar himself, who contacted me, that he had gotten a letter to go to grand jury on the Jaisel Correa case. Because $4,000 of the money came from a check from Snow Owl that Mr. Correa had given to Mr. Caesar. I saw the check. I saw the check, and that's what happened. He, and I'm not saying anything out of school because if you watched or listened to the Jaisel Correa trial, Mr. Caesar did go and testify to that. It has been a long time that the school has been there. I have offered, you know, what can I do to help? What can we do to facilitate this, to move this? After I asked questions about that at the Flint, the senior center, I never got called anymore to do the Portuguese show that Carlos Caesar and I would do every other week. So this was already in the process, and Attorney Aikens is still here. This was going on before the last mayoral election because Attorney Sam Sutter came in representing the Flint Neighborhood. So this, this buyer didn't go to them way back then. And at that point, when I was at the meeting at the senior center, I said, if you're not going to do anything with it, sell it. So, you know, to say that, I don't know who told you that, but I wish you would have called me because I could have told you to call Counselor Repoza, who was also there. And Mr. Aikens, Attorney Aikens, can certainly testify that this process has been going on to reclaim that school prior to any developer coming forward. With that, Mr. President, I yield, and thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C ten, Counselor Repoza?
My only issue, and again, I spent a lot of time in the Flint because I work in the Flint for, been in the Flint for 11 years now, working and seeing the, seeing the neighborhood and what the needs are. One of my biggest issues, and obviously it's kind of a, it just comes to the nature of what's happening with the building, is that a wonderful nonprofit that's operating out of that building is now going to be unhoused. A nonprofit that feeds a lot of people, food, clothing, and a variety of other supplies in a neighborhood that is poor. Let's put it that way. I mean, the Flint is poor, and we need, we need the help. So the fact that this nonprofit is going to be unhoused and not have a place to operate out of is a little troubling to me. I don't know the complete details, obviously, so I don't want to go on a witch hunt, per se, but I really would like to see the city, in cooperation with that nonprofit, try to get a place to be so they can continue to operate in a neighborhood that really needs it. I think it would be a disservice to the residents in the Flint Neighborhood if they lose that service. So, without a yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C eight, Counselor C ten.
I just, maybe I just need some clarification, but if what the Flint Neighborhood Association is saying, that they had a buyer, and this was like swept out from under them because they had a buyer for the building, that nonprofit would have been displaced regardless if the city took it over, if the city would displace more, if there was going to be affordable housing there. So I just want to make that, it doesn't sound like that, you know, the Flint Neighborhood Association was going to keep them there if they were going to sell it to housing development or whatever it is. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C seven, Counselor Repoza?
And just to be clear, it's just the circumstance of what's happening. I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but it's the circumstance of what's happening is what's causing this to be gone. And that should be a level of concern to what we've always said, we're concerned about, you know, affordable housing, access to services, food, et cetera. Here's an example of now we're losing something that's really beneficial. And again, it's a circumstance of what's going on.
Yeah, to your point.
That's all.
Whether we do anything, it's, they're going to go.
Correct. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion?
To refer to a Committee on Finance?
Motion to refer to Committee on Finance has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have recommendations to amend the traffic ordinances?
Could I just ask while the administration's here, can, so when we have finance, can they just be prepared to answer those statements about affordable housing and things like that?
Yeah, I think we can make a phone call and let them know exactly what questions you want to be prepared to ask, yeah.
Just a, all the statements that were made here tonight.
With the rules.
Clarification.
Hold on. I give you a fair warning of what I want to find out. Just so you'll be prepared.
This is when you show up, you can't say, oh, had I known, but I want to get the answers.
No problem. No problem.
I like to let people know what I want to know.
I just did it. It was just like.
Good job. It makes life easy when they know what you want to know.
Trying. Turning a new leaf.
Makes for good government. Madam Clerk?
We have the Traffic Commission making recommendations for amendments to the ordinances?
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordnances.
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordnances and Legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the Deval School building will be transferred back to the city from the Flint Neighborhood Association, and whereas within the building, Gates of Hope Incorporated was serving the local neighborhood with a food pantry along with clothing and other needs, and whereas without this service, many in the neighborhood would, will go without basic needs, and whereas the organization is in need of a location to continue this good work, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with representatives from Gates of Hope Incorporated and a representative of the administration to discuss options to help this organization continue this work for the citizens of the Flint Neighborhood.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas discussion has taken place regarding the lack of affordable housing and the homelessness issue in the city of Fall River, and whereas the property that once was Wataupa Heights is currently vacant, and whereas the housing, excuse me, the Fall River Housing Authority is currently in possession of the property, and whereas this would be an ideal place for a project similar to tiny houses, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with representatives from the Fall River Housing Authority and a representative from the administration to discuss options regarding potential uses of this property to alleviate these issues and to discuss the legal challenges that the Wataupa Heights property presents.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. On the motion, just curious, would you rather put this in the real estate committee or you want to put it in the finance committee? Because real estate is, it's land, it's development. Counselor C seven, Counselor Repoza?
Um, no. The answer is no to that.
Why is that?
Personal choice.
Okay. I think it belongs in the real estate committee.
To my colleague, I don't know if he wants to speak on it.
We're talking about land, we're talking about property developing. It's not a finance issue more than it is.
I'll yield to Counsel.
Real estate issues that involve in this.
Yeah. I, I understand, and I hear that loud and clear, but we were kind of ambushed at our last city council meeting about what as a city council are we going to do as a legislative body to try to work on this Wataupa Heights housing project, what's going on over there. While I recognize that the real estate committee might be the ideal choice, I think having the housing authority here as representatives, hearing it as a full body, and if any additional action is necessary after that meeting as a full body, we can then refer to the Committee on Real Estate. I think that would be better suited, just because I think we need to hear about some solutions, and I think the whole body should be here for that. So I'm, I'm in full support of the Committee on Finance convening with the housing authority on that. So I'll yield.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the city of Fall River faces significant challenges related to assisting individuals who are experiencing homelessness, and whereas winter is approaching and the temperatures outside will begin to drop dramatically, which increases public safety risks for all who are living outside in an encampment or in their vehicle, and whereas it is the responsibility of the city of Fall River to provide adequate shelter space to supply individuals with protection from freezing temperatures, lack of food, and absence of clean water and sanitation facilities, and whereas there are limited shelter locations and beds for these individuals as well as challenges with maintaining adequate staffing to operate these facilities, and whereas many individuals are hesitant to relocate into these shelter locations due to many factors, including but not limited to mental health challenges and substance abuse disorder, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the city administrator, the executive director, chief financial officer of the Community Development Agency, and any other interested parties to discuss financial resources that would assist the city of Fall River in providing additional shelter facilities and ensure adequate staffing of both medical and non-medical personnel within said facilities.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, Counselor C two wants to speak.
Counselor C two? Can we also invite representatives from the facilities that offer the shelter beds? You know, for example, like Star or Step In, those types?
All of them or just one in particular?
Um, I think we have three or four major ones that are involved. Like a representative from each one.
Sure. If that's the will of the council, you want to make that a form of a motion, just to make it official?
Yeah, I'll make that a form of a motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. If you have any other people you think we ought to know, just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Whereas numerous residents of the city of Fall River have recently expressed concern regarding the unauthorized use of city parks for parties, barbecues, and other outdoor events to the Board of Park Commissioners, and whereas those who are using the public parks for large gatherings must obtain authorization from the Board of Park Commissioners in accordance with Section 54-55 of the City Code, which relates to control of recreational facilities, cemeteries, and trees, and shrubs on public ways, and in accordance with Mass General Laws, Part One, Title VII, Chapter 45, Section 5, which relates to powers and duties of Boards of Park Commissioners, and whereas individuals who partake in these events are often consuming alcoholic beverages in public parks in violation of Section 46-9 of the Code, which relates to consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property, consumption on private property without permission, and whereas public safety in these parks is of utmost concern as these unauthorized events result in unsanitary conditions within these public recreational areas due to littering and improper disposal of garbage in violation of Section 26-32 of the Code, which relates to littering prohibited, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with a representative of the Board of Park Commissioners, the city administrator, and a representative of the Fall River Police Department to discuss these concerns regarding unauthorized events being held in public parks that jeopardize public health and environmental cleanliness and to seek appropriate action to remedy the matter by achieving consistent enforcement of all related city ordinances and Mass General laws.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just want to say for the public that is watching this at home, if you ever see anyone drinking alcohol consumption in one of our public parks, please call the police department. It is illegal. I don't think I've ever seen it. I don't know how many of my other councils or anyone has ever called me with this issue in all the years I've been here, but please, if you're watching this home, call the police department. If they're there in the park, call the police department. They'll, they'll take care of the rest. Counselor C seven, Counselor Repoza?
Yeah, and, and just for the record, the resolution was filed in response to a correspondence that not only the Board of Park Commissioners received at their last meeting, and, and somebody spoke to it, but also a message we were all received as well regarding exactly this. So that was kind of the rationale behind the resolution, to then bring all these parties together to figure out what the issue is and how we're going to solve it. That I yield.
You resolve it by calling the police. That's, the issue, it's right there. And it's against the law. They're drinking in the public parks, call the police.
If it was so easy. If it was so easy, but it's not.
The laws are in place, I'm just saying. That's why I'm talking to the residents at home. If you see someone drinking alcohol in the public parks, please call the police department. They will come and take care of it.
I do not disagree with him, Mr. President.
Anything? Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have a citation for Sergeant Frank Andrade.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12 is a citation for the Community Development Agency.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
13 is an order granting permission to Roll the Dice LLC for the removal of curbing at 2492 South Main Street.
Motion to adopt.
Roll call.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Roll call.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Roll call.
On adoption of the order, Counselors Kadeen?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
abstain.
Repoza?
Yes.
Sampson?